Okay, we'll call the meeting to order at 7 o'clock. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
First item is approval of the agenda. Is there a motion?
Make a motion we approve the agenda as presented.
Is there a second?
A second.
And a second, discussion. Saying none. All those in favor of approving the agenda as presented indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next is approval of minutes from 4:24. We have a motion on that.
We'll make a motion we approve the minutes of 4:24:23 as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
And a second. Discussion, corrections, changes, Mary Lee?
Well, Mr. Spalding was here, but he's not on the list.
Okay.
And heroin is spelled incorrectly in the bottom of the first paragraph, bottom paragraph of the first page.
Okay. I'm sorry, Mary Lee, I gotta take notes because Allison's not on.
Oh, okay. Bob Spalding isn't listed as being here.
Yep.
But he voted all the time. And then in the last paragraph of the first page, heroin is spelled incorrectly.
Okay. Anything else?
No.
That's it. Dick?
Just one thing. My name is spelt correctly, and my wife's last name is spelt incorrectly.
Where's that?
Boy, who can have that?
Yep.
Okay.
No, it's just a pet peeve.
Sure. Anything else? Dick, anything else?
That's all I found.
Joe?
David, this is in the approval of the minutes, page 1. Bowles, B-O-W-L-E-S, should be changed to Blow's, B-L-O-W-S, but there's no S on David Blow apostrophe S name. So strike the S from the last word in that first sentence.
Set up?
Yes.
That's it, okay. All those who approve the minutes with corrections indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Citizens' comments and/or concerns, items not on the agenda. Anyone who wishes to address the board, items not on the agenda.
I have a question. Mary Drogee?
Yes, Mary.
I just simply would like to know if the date for the 4th of July parade has been set yet, please. Thank you.
I didn't get it. 4th of July, she asked if the date for the 4th of July has been set. It has, and I think it was, parade was on Monday, and the fireworks were on Saturday. I'd have to verify, Mary. I'll post it out on social media. We haven't had our first meeting yet, so none of this stuff's been finalized.
Okay, we're just trying to plan the after-party, the bridge committee, so as soon as you know, if you could let us know, that'd be awesome. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else who wishes to address the board?
Mr. Chairman, Martha Clifford?
Yes, Martha.
I didn't get on, I didn't, have you adjusted the agenda for tonight? Because there was the, a bid from the Valleys for the roof material, and I don't know if this is a place we can discuss it, or if it was put on the agenda at a different time.
We have it, and I believe Mike will address it under the manager's report.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anything else? If not, we move on to recreation update. Bo Elliott Ramos. Are you there, Bo?
I am. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
You can?
Yes, go ahead.
Go ahead, Bo.
Okay, there might be a delay on my end. I apologize for that by talking to anyone. But I'll dive into the rec report. Thank you, Mike, for giving me, for sharing a template with me to capture some of these stats. So as far as adult rec is concerned, well, maybe I'll just start by saying what programs we've got going on now and what's ahead, just for the overview, and then I'll dive into the nitty-gritty of each of the categories of programs and all. So for the programs active now, we have a new schedule, but we do have indoor walking continued. I thought that that was gonna be something that we could just delicately trail off into the summer, but it's been a hit, almost as much of a hit as pickleball, which is, you know, a controversial opinion because pickleball's quite a hit. So there's pickleball definitely still happening, too. On Saturdays, we've got low pickleball happening, which was just a cool idea brought up by one of the enthusiastic volunteers. And so we've got low pickleball happening as well on Saturdays. It's a changing schedule. I need a cool way to make it less confusing, because at this point, it changes every six weeks, and there are multiple sessions happening. Not to argue down, but anyway, I need to simplify it. Yoga is also happening every week, that'll be through the end of May. Looking a little bit, just a little bit beyond into the summer, we'll also have a few other things coming soon. Well, actually, one quick little event happening this Friday is a youth spring paint event, and it'll be for kids, for the much younger kids, like under the age of five or so. So that'll just be a nice little free event for them. But then, you know, further into the summer, we've got sailing camp getting started, tennis camp getting started, and summer adventures camp. So a lot of camps going on there. And then, of course, Crystal Beach will be open. But then, and swimming lessons. But then, to get into the more specific details of, like, the categories here, with adult rec, the report for April here this last month, we had, like I said, eight indoor walking days. So I guess with the numbers that I'm giving, they're the amount of times these programs have occurred in the month. So indoor walking, I guess you guys also see this in front of you, so I don't need to necessarily read it all out loud, but it's like, it's a classic teacher quote. Who can read? Anyway, so I'll say, okay, there were a total of 26 adult programs. The only ones that we charged for so far are the pickleball. So that's the moneymaker, I guess, here. As far as youth rec, we are only really charging for the softball program, which has kicked off already. They got a game on Thursday, in fact. But everything else was, it is a free event, just to get people in the door and knowing that rec is happening, and it's happening here in the rec center. So there are 14 of those. Softball just kicked off at the end of April, which is why those numbers are a little low. As far as revenue totals, we've got a little over $1,500 from the month of April, combining adult and youth rec. Most of that is from programs like, well, most of that's from pickleball, and then the other big one would be youth softball. So those are the two big items that brought in some revenue for us in the April. Meetings attended. So I guess these are like the more, these are like the more formal, official meetings. There are 11 of those. Harder to keep track of the more informal ones of folks who just come in, but those have also been really, like, getting your work done, which hopefully you guys will see later. But anyway, yeah, that's a bit of a wrap on April. I don't know if you have any questions?
Any questions for Bo?
Bo, I guess I'd be interested in what you think you should expect in May. I assume that there'll be more softball, and many of these other categories will continue on a either weekly or bi-weekly or semi-weekly basis?
Yes, yes, definitely. A lot of these programs that are occurring now, they'll continue through May. The other thing that I've got to be mindful of is our transition right now from Event Bright to Hago. And having both of them operate at the same time is a little problematic, or it's not the easiest way to, it's not the most efficient way to work together and to gather that information. So there is, I'm actually kind of trying to think of May as my switch, as when I'm able to do the leap from one to the other. So actually, as far as sailing and tennis is concerned, for example, right now, we have a draft form of those registration forms on Hago, but we're working on, you know, getting them, you know, perfectly working and published live. So because it's not a quick process the way Event Bright is, you know, with Event Bright, if you've got an event planned, you can put it up in 20 minutes, and you're done making the event on Event Bright. But just because we're just now onboarding with Hago, and it's the just beginning process, I've gotta be a little bit more delicate and take more time to plan out how I'm launching programs, so I don't confuse everyone.
Any other questions for Bo? Joe?
Just a second question, Jim. I suppose in terms of my personal interest in data, I would find it helpful if these cells had maybe data in a format that would indicate the number of events per month and the number of people participating in that month. So let's say indoor walking, that was twice a week, apparently, so you might have 8 slash 12, or 20, or something of that sort. Because the number of events doesn't give me a sense of the popularity of an event or how many people it's drawing out. But I think, thank you very much for this. It's much appreciated.
Anything else? Thank you, Bo. We appreciate it. Moving on, update bylaws for recreation. We have the printed copy. I believe the ordinance was adopted in 1971, and then was updated, amended. I don't have that on this one.
1998.
98. Okay, so Martha has made the corrections in red. What is your pleasure? Joe?
As I went through this, Mr. Chairman, it seemed like, well, I didn't have the date on mine, but it's clear that it was put together a long time ago, and a lot has changed, especially recently with the creation of a full-time rec position and the creation of an administrative department of recreation and parks. And, you know, the current document, for example, talks about the commission appointing the superintendent, in the original version, now the proposed language would be the Recreation and Parks Director. It talks about the commission setting the salary for employees. And it uses a lot of words like control, manage, et cetera. And my assumption, I guess, was that when we were, when we created the Administrative Department of Recreation and Parks, the town manager became the supervisor and the hireer. And I think that the most appropriate thing is to rewrite this with the eye that, from the perspective that this would be creating a commission that is, that advises the Director of Recreation and Parks, and advises a select board as well. So I'm personally not, I don't think we should address this tonight. I'd rather table this and ask for a process that would rewrite this with the new arrangements in mind.
Do you care to make a motion to table it tonight?
I would make that motion, yes.
Is there a second?
I will second that motion.
Second, discussion?
Yeah, I just want to comment that I agree wholeheartedly with Mr. Mark. When I read this, the second paragraph in Section 6 specifically was the one that caused me to want to take a breath and review this, because, well, you mentioned it specifically, Joe, but it gives the recreation commission the authority to hire and fire and set the salary of our rec director, which is not the case. That's not how we do it at this point in time. So I agree with Joe that this needs to be, this needs to be rewritten and thought out a little more. Do you agree with that, Joe?
Yeah, I mean, it's 50 years old, and a lot has changed.
I agree.
You agree. All those in favor of tabling it for discussion at a future meeting, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
I do have a question, though, Mr. Chairman. Who are we going to ask to rewrite this?
I would assume the manager would work with the recreation chairperson. Is that reasonable, Mike?
With the commissioner?
Pardon?
With the commissioner, with Martha.
Commissioner, okay, the commissioner. All righty. Is that acceptable?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Martha.
Okay, so we, I understand everything you've said, and I don't disagree with it. Just want to make sure that you understand that my attempt was not to create a totally brand-new document, because I wasn't quite sure where the select board wanted to go. Just my own sense.
Are you willing to work with the town manager to rewrite it?
Yes.
You are?
Yes.
Okay. With that being the case, any other comments on it?
Just don't misunderstand us, Martha. This is an excellent start, but that needs more work.
All those in favor of the motion as presented, indicate by saying aye. Aye. Motion passes. Local hazardous mitigation. Stephanie?
Sure, would you like me to start, Mike?
Yes, well, I was gonna give kind of the overview, Stephanie, if you don't mind.
Yes, whatever your preference.
So this local hazard mitigation plan expired, we're a year past expiration at this point. So for the town to go through this process, we put it out to bid, and one regional planning commission was, you authorize them to be our, kind of the lead or project manager on this, and Stephanie was assigned that. And then we had to pick board members, so we've got Kerry Fowler, representing the fire district, we got Jim Leamy, representing the, as a health officer in the select board, myself, Heath Goyette, Dave Fabritius, Jim Thomas. Everybody?
Peter Mantello.
Oh, and Peter Mantello.
And your newest addition, Eric Holber.
Right, and I forgot his title.
So he's the emergency preparedness specialist for our region with the Vermont Department of Health, and he coincidentally happens to be a Castleton resident. He came on board as a result of the community planning workshop that was held in April.
So we've held several meetings. There was some new FEMA requirements for this document, and Stephanie briefed us on that, so it was a little bit more involved than maybe in the past. And we've had some good meetings, some good surveys from the town, asking them for their input, and probably like almost 40, I believe, so it's more than I ever thought it would be, and I was really pleased with that. But Stephanie's really taken us down this path, and Stephanie, if you wouldn't mind coming up to the podium, so we can hear you. That's the speaker on the ceiling up there, so.
Okay. So thanks for the introduction, Mike. I'm Stephanie Burke. I'm a planner with the Rutland Regional Planning Commission, and I've been working on local hazard mitigation plans since about 2019. I think Castleton is the 23rd of the 27 towns in our region that I've worked with, so I do have a fair amount of experience kind of facilitating this process for municipalities. But new this year, FEMA has released an updated guidance for the completion of these plans. So as Mike pointed out, the process and I think the bar for contents in these local plans has been raised a bit this year, and this is the first town I'll be working with under the new FEMA guidelines. So that being said, I have a really close working relationship with the folks at Vermont Emergency Management, who ultimately review these plans on behalf of FEMA, so I'm very confident that we'll be able to, you know, get your plan in place without significant heartburn. Okay? So my role in being here tonight is to present your local teams' work to date. So what you should have in your packets is a working draft of the plan with today's date on it, and you should also have something called the Local Mitigation Plan Review Tool. So this is pretty much the checklist that we will fill out when we're ready to ultimately submit the final draft to, for FEMA approval. So this is what dictates what needs to be in your plan, okay? Part of FEMA's process requires that there be meaningful opportunities for public engagement during the plan development, not just at the end. So your team has reached what we would consider the first critical milestone in the development of this plan, and what you have before you represents kind of the first half of the document, okay? So if you want to look at the plan, it, you know, the table of contents is complete, it lists all the sections that will be included in the final version of this document, but all you have before you to review at this point in the process is work up through Section 5, okay? So you won't see anything related to the hazard mitigation strategy, the plan maintenance, or any changes since your 2017 plan yet. You'll, we'll be circling back with you later this year when all of that work is complete. But at this point, your local team has worked through the plan introduction, the plan purpose, and developed, for the most part, a community profile. There is one placeholder left in that that I'll circle back on and ask you folks to think about over the next couple of weeks. The planning process is really a section of the plan that gets developed as we work through these stages of developing the update, and it's a good place for you to reference the critical dates to get us from where we are today, May 22nd, to completion, which we're thinking is going to be sometime in August, okay? So the Section 5, the Hazard Identification and Risk Assessment, is really the area of the working draft that we're really most interested in soliciting public input on, okay? Obviously, we would want you to review all the, you know, parts of this plan that have been done to date, but really, the Hazard Identification and Risk Assessment is the section that, for lack of better words, kind of lays out what are your concerns, what are your issues, okay? The team looked at a range of natural hazards and evaluated what they think are the highest risks in this community. And they ultimately decided on the impacts associated with severe winter storms that are extreme cold, snow, and ice, the impacts associated with thunder and/or winter storms that are, that come in the form of strong wind, and then flooding that would be associated with either, you know, a precipitation event that could occur at any time of the year nowadays, right? You can have flooding events that occur in winter, because you get a thaw cycle somewhere in there. So those are the three highest-risk natural hazard impacts that the team thinks are of concern in Castleton. And so Section 5 then goes on to describe narratively, you know, what the concerns are for each of those, okay? The profiles are set up so that there's an introduction that describes generically the type of impact that is of issue, then leads into some either state or Rutland County level data, and then we drill down into real Castleton specifics. So what the team is going to be looking for from local officials and the public at this point are really to make, really look at that Section 5 and make sure that we've told your story, right? In terms of what are your risks and vulnerabilities to these types of natural hazard impacts. And then from there, we will post this plan, from here, we'll post this plan for a two-week public comment period. We'll close the comment period to coincide with your next select board meeting in May. And at that meeting, I'd ask that you include an agenda item to really kind of discuss the plan as a group, and then have an opportunity for any members of the public to share their input at the meeting. And in addition, comments can be emailed to Mike during the public comment period. The team will reconvene after the close of the public comment period, and then, you know, take a look at anything that's received that relates to the Hazard Identification and Risk Assessment, or any other parts of the plan that have been completed to date, get, you know, address that input, and then they'll be moving on to develop the mitigation strategy. So basically, what kind of actions are going to be reasonable and practical for the municipality to try to implement to address the identified risks. When we get all the way through the process, we'll be circling back with the final draft to present, just like we're doing tonight. Again, have there be a public comment period, so that by the time we're ready to submit this plan for approval, review and approval to the state, everybody at the local level is very comfortable and in agreement with the contents of the plan. So when we get to the approval stage, we have to go, we have to go through kind of a two-step process. The first approval will be what's called approval pending adoption. So you get approval from the state of Vermont that says, yes, your plan, according to this regulatory checklist, has all the required contents and fulfills all of the federal requirements, so you can adopt the plan. So once we get that preliminary approval, you folks, as the select board, would then formally adopt the plan, and we'd resubmit for FEMA final approval. So we're targeting probably the September timeframe to get that final draft submitted for that first approval.
Ready for questions?
I'm sure I'm ready for questions.
Okay. Questions from the board?
I have none.
You have none? Joe?
It's pretty straightforward. I guess, a question and observation, Stephanie.
Mm-hmm.
The question is, aside from the obvious, that you should try to mitigate hazard risks, why do you do this?
Sure, that's an excellent question. And Chapter 2, or Section 2 of the draft, the plan purpose, kind of touches on a range of benefits for planning. I think there are intrinsic planning benefits to having a plan in place, so that everyone is in agreement as to what your risks and vulnerabilities are, and what you can do to help reduce those. Having a plan in place like this also has financial advantages.
Can you talk about those?
Sure.
I assume that was the case, but I just would like to know.
Sure, yep, yep. So there's two different types of financial advantages. The first relates to grant opportunities. So you, as a community, would not even be eligible to apply for state or FEMA hazard mitigation grants to do any mitigation work unless you had a current FEMA-approved plan. So all of the money that's available at the state and federal levels to support mitigation implementation, you can't access any of that if you don't have a current plan in place, okay? The second... The second financial benefit comes into play if there is a federally declared disaster and there are damages to public infrastructure. So, if there's a federally declared disaster, FEMA will step in and help cover the costs of recovery, you know, repairs to public infrastructure damages through what's called FEMA's Public Assistance Program. And they typically will cover 75% of your eligible costs, leaving a 25% match for theoretically the municipality to cover. In the state of Vermont, they've set up what's called the Emergency Relief Assistance Fund or the acronym ERAF for short. So, to help Vermont municipalities cover that 25% match, the state of Vermont will give you 7.5% right out of the gate. They have an incentive program where if you take certain steps to increase your flood resiliency, they will increase the amount of their match. So, in Castleton's case, the first four steps would be making sure you have a current annually adopted local emergency management plan, which Mike is very good about getting done every year. The second is making sure that you have adopted current road and bridge standards that are at least as stringent as the current VTREN standards in place. The third is participation in the National Flood Insurance Program. And the fourth, of course, is having a current local hazard mitigation plan. So, if you have those four things in place, the amount of state match goes from 7.5% to 12.5%. And then, for an additional increase in state match from 12.5% to 17.5%, those communities who have adopted river corridor bylaws can be eligible for that maximum state match.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
The other comment, I guess, is the observation I wanted to share. Twice, on Page 11 and Page 13, you talk about the cost of Tropical Storm Irene as being $172,500 in local damages. Now, I happened to work at Castleton State College at the time of Irene, and I'm intimately aware of that.
So, these would be FEMA public assistance dollars.
What does that mean?
So, the municipal, so any, these are not necessarily like everybody under the sun. These would be dollars that were tracked through FEMA.
Right.
Unless the town has something different to provide, you know, that's what we'd utilize for financial records.
And I noticed that a couple of our significant hazard dams are on private property, are privately owned.
Significant hazard dams, yes. You know, I think there are a couple that are public but not municipally owned, and then the remainder are private, yes.
So, are they covered by this or are they meant to be covered by this plan?
They're not municipal. So, unless there was a desire on behalf of the town to act as an advocate, therefore applicant, for monies to address a private dam, there's really, you know, no. It would not be, this plan would not be intended to cover private property.
But, so, it's possible that the, one of the bigger risks to a community might be a privately-owned dam that won't be addressed through this plan.
It will be identified in this plan, but unless, as I said, the town wants to take a leadership role in trying to implement some action to address that risk, no, there wouldn't necessarily be an action correlated to that risk.
Thank you.
Mary Lee?
I'm fine.
That's it. Dick? Anyone else who has any questions for Stephanie?
That public?
Yes, sir.
Question I would ask is Ted Day, Castleton Overture. When we first moved in, we had a beaver pond since they've since died out, but, and it wasn't on my property, but if they built a new dam, would that be something I should let the town know? Because...
I would encourage that, yes. I mean, the release of a beaver dam during a flood event, depending on its location, could definitely have impacts on not only private but municipal property. It can, you know, lead to a road washout or something like that. So, that does become, you know, an issue for the town to be aware of, but to what control you might have on somebody else's property about that depends on, you know, the disposition of the landowner.
When Irene came, we had just moved in. It did wash, the storm itself washed out our road without the beaver dam being there. So, with the beaver dam...
You could have a cascading...
All hell would have broken loose probably. So, my comment would be that maybe, talking to people with the public input part, are there any beaver dams that are out there that need to be known about?
So, I would encourage, there's a set of maps at the town office that'll be available during the public comment period. If you're so inclined, I'd go to the town office and I'd talk with Mike or someone there and show them kind of your area of concern.
We have that on Sucker Brook, too, because it was no beaver dam and it flooded North Road and there was a big beaver dam.
Yeah. I would, so that's exactly the kind of input that we're hoping to get from folks during this comment period. So, the resources are available at the town office for marking up on a map. I think that would be my recommended way to provide your input as opposed to trying to look at the digital version and email Mike. It would be, I think, much more clear for your local planning team to have you just mark up the large maps that they have at the town office.
Anything else for Stephanie? Mike?
Just a comment on that. If there's a beaver or family of beavers that are clogging up culverts today, matter of fact, we were out today on Sheldon Road, working on that problem. So, if there is something that's affecting the road immediately, we take care of that immediately. But, if it's further upstream of that, it's something we'd have to identify.
Okay. Thank you, Stephanie. We appreciate it.
You're welcome. So, I've mentioned in the community profile, there was one last placeholder. It's a placeholder for a statement of growth potential. So, I'm going to just hand out what was given to me late Thursday night, early Friday, I got it Friday morning, from your Planning Commission, because they've taken a stab at helping to provide a statement of growth potential.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Mike, here's just an extra copy. So, in your community profile, when we talk about, kind of, it's on Page 2 of the plan, when we talk about demographics and growth potential, I ask municipalities to provide a statement here because FEMA wants to see if your community has significant growth potential, that it's not going to occur in such a way that will increase your vulnerabilities to the identified hazard impacts that you've described in Section 5. So, before we move into the mitigation strategy or start to describe, you know, how your positions have changed since 2017, we really need to kind of establish that baseline in your community profile about what you see moving forward in terms of growth potential. So, as I mentioned, Jim Thomas had provided on behalf of your Castleton Planning Commission a recommendation for how to describe your potential growth. But, I'll leave it to you as a community to, during the public comment period, come up with what you want to see reflected in the plan. Okay?
Mike? I did reach out to the Cedar Rack again. I talked to Mary McIntyre. They're meeting, I think, on the 18th, and she has some questions I still need to answer her questions, but to get them involved as part of that growth potential. And I think you handed out or sent to us a copy of Brandon's that was in their approved plan, and I thought that was a great, like, how to approach us, maybe, if you don't have a vision of what we're being asked to do, but that's a great tool to share as well.
Okay. Very good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Stephanie.
You're welcome.
Next item is crack ceiling bids. Mike, you have a recommendation on this?
I believe, Mr. Chairman, you have the DPW Director on line. I think Dave's out there.
Dave, are you here?
He was on there. Point.
I'm here, I'm here.
What's your recommendation on crack ceiling bid, Dave?
My recommendation is to go with the people we had last year. The people from Massachusetts had a good product, but they were twice as expensive.
And the...
That industry, industry, or which one is it?
Yeah, it was in this industry, so they were very expensive.
We don't, we want to...
So, Dave, for clarity, your recommendation is Fresh Coat?
Yes.
Yeah, they did a good job last year, and they will come right on site and boil their rubber there and don't charge us while they're boiling it. So, it's a good deal.
And the total amount is $23,700, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is there a motion on that?
I'll make a motion that we award this year's crack ceiling bid to Fresh Coat for the total of $23,700.
Is there a second?
Second?
And a second. Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Coin drop policy. Review, remove reference to CVS, 8th grade, and consider Castleton Recreation. I believe the max we have is six coin drops.
Oh, coin drop? Pardon? I'm sorry. Are you talking about the coin drop?
I am.
Oh, I'm from the Community Center. I have a request.
That'll be the next item on the agenda.
Okay. I'm sorry, I didn't...
Right now, we're discussing the policy and possible changes to it.
Copy the policy.
We have, okay, policy. What you want to do is just remove the part that's highlighted. Mike, is that what you want? Because we don't have the 7th and 8th grade here anymore. There isn't a Washington trip.
Yes, free review, Mr. Chairman. If that's, yeah, that's correct. We don't. And it was my recommendation to add rec, but that's up to you guys.
Okay. Let's do one at a time. Shall we remove the Castle Village School coin drop since it's no longer here? Is there a motion? Yeah, sure.
Do you think he's trying to... Do you think he's going to get a turkey?
Hey, guys, if you're going to have part of conversation...
I hope you get a turkey, though.
Hope so, too. Mr. Chairman, my question was whether the new Fairhaven Union Middle School still does a, or does a Washington trip.
I don't believe they do. Is that correct, Mike?
I don't make me lie to you. I don't know. I'm not sure.
Not this year, anyway.
They don't live?
No.
Okay.
So, I'd be willing to make motion that we remove the highlighted section of Point 2B and add the Castleton Rec Department instead. And, bear with me, please. I do think that the eventuality that's listed here, that is, if a total of six requests are not received by April 30th, we open up, we consider the possibility of opening up additional coin drops for the Rec Department, the Castleton Fire Department, and any other organization or agency. So, let me make that motion and try to do it a little bit more clearly. I move that we strike the phrase "Castleton Village School," replace that with "Castleton Maintain the rest of that line, the following line, and the line below that, which is now the fourth line, and where it says, "Giving consideration to the Castleton 8th Grade Class," we put instead, "Giving consideration to the Castleton Rec Department comma," and continue the rest of that sentence as it presently stands.
Is there a second?
Well, seconded that.
Is there a discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Go ahead.
It was going to, yeah. I just was wondering if the merits of having the Rec Department do coin drops, is that something that we really want to... Well, let me rephrase that. I don't know that it's reasonable to require a paid employee to be doing coin drops, so if the volunteers want to do that, that's one thing, but I don't think it's appropriate to require a paid employee to do coin drops. That was a concern I had. Does that make sense?
One person's not going to be able to do it alone, so they'd have to have volunteers anyway.
Nor would it be fair to expect that individual to even attend that. That should be strictly a volunteer thing, in my opinion. That's the only concern I had when I read this on the agenda.
Well, hearing your thoughts, Mr. Combs, makes me willing to withdraw my motion and instead replace that with a recommendation that we allow the Castleton Fire Department to have two coin drop days, period.
Don't misunderstand me. I'm not opposed to having the Rec Commission have a coin drop. I just don't want to require the Rec Director to be responsible for either organizing or attending or administering that event. That's my concern.
Mr. Chairman? Martha Clifford?
Just a second, Martha. I'll get to you.
Okay.
Right now, it's board discussion.
One way to accomplish that, Mr. Combs, would be to amend my motion to say Castleton Recreation Commission instead of Castleton Recreation Department.
That would be acceptable, in my opinion.
That acceptable to you, Mary Lee?
Yes.
It is? Okay. All righty.
I just want to make sure that everyone, especially the town manager and Rec Director, understand my point.
Okay. All those in favor, oh, I'm sorry, Martha. Yes, go ahead.
No, that was probably what I was going to suggest, too. I think that that is a good compromise.
Thank you, Martha. All those in favor of the amended motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Move on to coin drop requests. We have the Friends of Fairhaven Union High School Project Graduation. I believe we've already taken care of the Volunteer Fire Department, Castleton Community Center, and the Castleton Lions Club.
I'm here from the Castleton Community Center.
Okay, you're on here, anyway.
Yeah. Do I need to give you the dates or you have those already?
Dates are here.
Okay.
10/14/23.
Yes. And Clement Weather Backup Date on requesting the 4th, Saturday, October 28th, as a backup if there's rain.
I don't see any other conflict here on that. Is anyone else?
Doesn't seem to be.
So, who administrates these dates? Is that something your staff takes care of, Mike?
Let me put it on the public calendar.
Okay. So, it's not a big, it's not a heavy lift?
Any other discussion on this?
So, were all these requests submitted by our deadline?
I didn't personally receive them, Joe, so I'm looking at the dates here on the...
April 24th, Friends of Union, Union High School.
Yep, they were.
I don't see...
They were.
I don't see a date on the Lions Club. Maybe I'm missing it.
I'll take a stab at a motion, if you want me to.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
I'll make a motion, we approve the following coin drops. Friends of Fairhaven Union High School project graduation for the date of May 27, 23, Castleton Volunteer Fire Department for the date of September 16, 23, Castle and Community Center for October 14, 23, and Castle Lions Club with a date of June 24, 23.
Second?
Any discussion?
That town manager.
Town manager.
Would you include the backup date of the 28th of October for their backup date?
Yes, it was, yeah.
But I didn't think that needed to be in the motion, but I will amend my motion if it-
Just in case somebody else asks for that.
Okay, so the rain date for the Castle and Community Center will be October 28, 2023.
Okay, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, the motion passes.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Joe?
Would it be appropriate to ask the town manager to announce that there are two dates, two additional dates available?
Certainly.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, next item, Lions Club request for the use of the town green auction 2023, and we do have a letter on that. Patch wrote it. Is there a motion?
Go ahead, go ahead.
Go ahead, Mary Lee.
Okay, I make a motion that Castle Lions Club be allowed the use of the green on August 2nd and 3rd, 2023, for their annual auction.
Is there a second?
Second?
Any discussion?
Just that we should actually make it known that they are going to be, there's some, they start usually a week ahead of time, and it takes them a couple of days to clean up, depending on the weather, so not only do they get to use the green those two days, but they get to use it for a period of about 10 days. I don't know if that needs to be in the motion, Mr. Chairman, but I'm gonna make sure everyone knows that.
Let's say it's in there, how's that?
Fair enough.
I believe the letter-
Jim? The letter does say that.
Said about a week.
Yeah.
Sunday night, Friday's a rain date, and Saturday, Friday or Saturday, December.
That is correct.
Yeah, I know you've had to wait, sometimes you have to wait a day or two for it to dry out, so.
Okay, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion passes. Tobacco and tobacco substitute license for approval. Carl champagne, Coke and glass, liquor license for approval. Cap Red LLC, Bombazine Dog, first and third class, and outside consumption. I believe the chief has reviewed these and has not indicated any problem. Is there a motion?
Make a motion that we approve the tobacco and tobacco substitute license for Coke and Glass and the liquor license for Bombazine Dog, first and third class, with outside consumption be approved as presented.
Is there a second, Joe?
Just a question, do we also need to add the tobacco substitute license in that motion?
Yes. Yes, we do.
I thought I said that, but if I didn't, the first one of the tobacco and tobacco substitute license for Carl champagne slash Coke and glass?
I would second that motion.
Okay, any discussion? If not, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Rutland County Department of Public Works mutual aid agreement, annual approval. Mike, would you care to address this?
Sure, this is, this is the annual time, it should've been done with the local emergency management plan, just oversight on my part. So, it's no change to what it was last year, still, that Rutland County agreement should a neighboring town need to, need assistance in public, run the public work side. Knowing that if there's a disaster, something's happened, we have to take care of ourselves first, and then we help as needed, but, or as we can, but it's no change to what it's been for the last three years.
Something we have to sign here, Mike?
It should be in the-
Oh, here. Okay, sitting there, all right, good enough. Okay, any questions for Mike? If not, is-
Can I see that on my motion? That's the road standards?
Yeah, so there's not, it's just a motion then to approve it, there's no signature page on it.
I don't, I didn't see that in-
No, it's good, there is, there's no signature page, it's just a, yeah.
Is there a motion to approve it?
Did you get a copy of it?
No.
I got a copy.
No, that's the road and bridge standards, Mary Lee?
That's the roads, road and bridge standards?
But if there've been no changes?
There, there are no, no changes, zero changes.
I would move that we reauthorize the Rutland County Department of Public Works mutual aid agreement.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Is there discussion? If not, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Thank you, I'm sorry about that.
Appointment of an interim zoning administrator. Do we have someone here from the Planning Commission making a recommendation?
She left, she left.
She left?
She was here for the hazard mitigation.
Well, we received an email from the Planning Commission, they met on the 4th, and their motion was to appoint James Thomas as an interim zoning administrator. And there's some caveats to that, if you want me to explain what those might be.
Please do.
So, obviously Jim's not here all year round, so in our budget, we have the money to, to bring another person on to train under Jim while he's here for the summer, so that when he takes off for Florida, that we're left with a trained zoning administrator. The Planning Commission did interviews on the 4th for the zoning administrator position, which Jim actually participated in as a candidate, and they selected someone and wanna make that recommendation, but that will be at the next meeting, because I haven't had a chance to, to talk to the individual yet. But that was their, the PC's, the Planning Commission's recommendation, nomination, but, so in the interim, it'd be if you approve Jim, as, as, instead of me being the interim, it'd be Jim being the interim, and he would work with Jeff Byazusi to get caught up on everything that's kinda in process right now, and then phase out Jeff, and Jim would become the lead on that through, through the summer.
Does that mean that Jim would be removed from the DRB as long as he's zoning administrator?
And I have his letter of resignation from the DRB, if, if you were to appoint him, he's already prepared to resign from the DRB.
But he can stay with the Planning Commission, okay?
For, right now, I guess there's a house, there's a bill in the House that would change that, but as of right now, yes, he can stay with the Board.
Any questions?
And term wise, I guess it's really-
When do you, when do you leave?
Usually mid-October.
But the good thing is that, and anybody that knows Jim, he's been around, he's done this two different stints for the town, so he has the, he can walk into this and is not totally greenhorn, and we'll be able to work with Jeff to get caught up and help train a new person.
Well, and if we make a motion and appoint him as interim zoning administrator, that by definition means that it's intended to be short-term, is that pretty? That's self-evident, in my opinion, what do you guys think?
Yes.
Yes.
I'll make a motion that we appoint Jim Thomas as our interim zoning administrator.
I'll second it.
Second. Any discussion?
Discussion from the floor.
Just a second, just a second. Mike, I guess you, you were first, and-
I was first?
Yeah, I saw the end, but the podium was in the way, and I-
It's just a question, Mr. Chairman, it's whether or not his resignation is part of that motion or be a separate motion, just to acknowledge that he is, he's resigning from, you accept his resignation from the DRB.
Why don't you just make it part of the motion? Be, be simpler that way.
Then I'll amend my motion to include that we also accept Mr. Thomas's resignation from the Developmental Review Board.
Is that agreeable? Okay, now, yes, sir.
Question, Jim lives, leaves in October, so who takes over in October?
The Planning Commission made a recommendation to hire someone to train under Jim, so that person would take over when Jim leaves.
Presumably before Jim leaves.
Yeah, correct, it's, it's, there'll be a handoff that's, when he walks away, that, when Jim walks away, that there's a fully trained, no-
Mr. Amboozie is not staying on?
No, he was hired as a consultant just a short time.
Anything else?
As my own concern.
If not, all those in favor of the motion as amended indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Adoption of road and bridge standards.
We should've figured, gotten that guy to identify himself.
Mike, would you care to address this?
I'm sorry, what'd you-
I'm sorry, take your time.
Was there a question, I didn't know if you-
I think we're on the town manager's report, I think.
The road and bridge standards, I think you-
Yeah.
We didn't do that yet.
So, again, this is an annual, annual occurrence. This also plays into, we can't apply for the better roads or grants and aid type grants without having the road and bridge standards in place, saying we've adopted the municipal roads general permit standards, which we have and have been doing for five years now. So there's no change to how we do business or how it impacts the town besides saying that we're gonna follow these standards and allows us to apply for grants, too.
Okay, any questions for Mike on this? If not, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that we sign the certificate of compliance for town road and bridge standards and network inventory for this coming year.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And the duly authorized administrator, would that be the town manager?
That's you, no, you guys, it's, it's a place on there for you guys to sign it, that's the-
Yeah, I got that, but there's only four things, and then it says duly administrator, authorized administrator.
You guys-
Just the five of us sign it?
Yes.
Okay. I get no say.
I'm just looking to stand up.
Bring those things up, it's a whole movie.
Could I just make a suggestion procedurally? I think we need to have a little stand with a sign near the entrance that says, "Please sign in."
Okay.
A lot of people forget to do that.
I was, I actually, Jim, I was gonna ask you today, I forgot, I was gonna, at the beginning of the meetings, too, if you wouldn't mind-
Sure.
Just making that announcement, too.
Okay, moving on to the manager's report. Mike?
I guess there was one thing that we wanted to pass on into my report, was that, the beach. So if I could just start with that. In your, I handed out on your desk, I worked it out with Martha today. This was just lingering from, God, I think almost two years ago, that the beach, the bathhouse at the beach, the roof is rotted on the east side, and so there, here's the invoice for thirty, $3,866.50 for the materials to do it, they're gonna, they're gonna do it in kind, or in-house, I mean, we're doing the work internally with our staff at the beach, and I looked at the Resolution 22-01, carryover encumbrances from the FY, fiscal year ending 22 budget, and there was $3,800 in there, and I have, I'm sure, I have a copy, I think you guys have, too, the resolution, it should be in the back page of that.
Yeah.
Is that $3,800, so we're short $66 something, that could come out of the operating budget, but, but use that, that carryover, the encumbrance, to get those repairs and maintenance done.
I don't, I don't, I don't see any purchase order, can we just say approved and sign it?
Well, if you, if you authorize the, the purchase, we'll get the purchase order submitted, but at least we can get the, the materials ordered, and, because this has, the encumbrances have to be used by June 23rd, so we wanna make sure we have at least the materials in our possession.
Any other questions for Mike on this? If not, do you wish us to make a motion to encumber that, Mike?
Well, to use the, I mean, the language would be to use the $3,800 identified in the Resolution 22-01 for repair and maintenance.
Is there a motion to that effect?
I guess I'm confused.
What's that?
We can approve a purch, we have, you're asking us to-
Wait for the purchase order, or?
Yeah, I think at this point in time, we can authorize the town manager to proceed, and then when we, when we got a purchase order, we'll authorize that as well.
Sure. Seems reasonable.
It's just over my spending limit, so to go over there and buy the stuff right now would be violating our purchase policy.
Well, it's, and I'm confused here, because it says here that the bid is for thirty, or is it the second page on the bid?
It's on the very back page of the bid, $3,866.50.
Okay, so that's where the $66 comes from, that's your, okay.
Okay, so is there a motion to authorize the manager to proceed, and once the purchase order is ready, we will approve it?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
And a second, discussion?
You're taking away their shower, though.
Taking away the what?
If you fix their roof, you're taking away the shower.
Yeah, but there's side benefits to having a roof that actually sheds water.
Okay. Okay, all those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion's approved. What else do you have, Mike?
I don't know, just the stuff in yellow, obviously, I don't know if you have anything in question, rather than me go through every one of them, but certainly I'll try to answer everything you have.
Well, I just have a concern about the one for Parsons Hill, is that still stuck in the mud?
It is, as of today, getting the water drawings from Fire District Three. I talked to Kerry about it, and he's like, it's not anything to do with Fire District One, and we know it is, but it's, it's been a challenge to get that, and that's what's holding it up right now.
So for clarity's point, for, we still don't have the state approval to put that out the bid, is that correct? And the reason we don't have the state approval is because we don't have the drawings from Fire District Three?
Right, so they can't do the, the right-of-way stuff.
Is there anything we as a board can help you move that along?
Anybody knows the, the operator who might see him in passing, or can talk to him? The question, I mean, I don't know if they have them, if they can lay their hands on them, I don't know what the holdup is, but I can definitely tell you that the holdup for the project is that.
That's really what I'm trying to get at.
Could you be a little more specific as to what it is that we would like? These are drawings?
Yeah, the, the-
Blueprints?
The Azbilly blueprint drawings for where the water lines are along that Route 48 corridor, so that has to go through the state's easements and right-of-way portion, and they won't do it unless they see the drawings.
Okay, and the operator has been contacted by?
Dan Minnet.
Dan Minnet.
Yep, several times. So, I, in here, I said I'll, I'll reach out to him myself, but I may not, I don't know, I call his pager, because that's what he, that's his preferred method of getting to hold him, so if he calls me back, great, if not, I guess I'll have to do a little crawl and find him up at his house.
Okay, anything else for Mike on this, this item?
Could you just talk a little more about the, oh, this item, sorry, no.
No, it's okay. Any, okay, if nothing else on this item, next one, Joe, go ahead.
I was gonna bring up the trestle.
Which number is that, please?
I didn't mark the highlighting. Page six, 5B. Page 6, 5B. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah, that's the right one.
So, how, V-Trans personnel said that the project cost will likely exceed $1 million, and our share of that is 20 percent. Is this slated to happen?
It's, yes, it's been, well, we applied for grants, and we were awarded two grants, and we also received money from FEMA, because this goes back to that storm in April of 2019.
Right.
So, after all this research, and we got V-Trans involved because of the trestle, that, there lies the problem, is they're going to pay for the engineering, they're going to do all this wonderful things, and they kind of hamstrung us on the process. So, we can't use FEMA money, because if we, if we brought, if we did the work that was in the FEMA scope of work, it doesn't meet the V-Trans standards, so we'd have to tear it all apart after we built it, which makes absolutely no sense. So, we deobligated the FEMA money and gave that back to the $45,000 back to the state, through Vermont Emergency Management to FEMA. So, then, the Better Roads grant has to be, has to be completed by June 30th of this year. Now that this process got dragged out over the winter, and we can never get that scope of work done out of the Better Roads grant by June 30th, so they're like, you're not going to be able to use the money. So, now we're down to a Grants and Aid grant for $156,000, and that won't even slightly cover the project. So, everybody and their brother's been involved, as from V-Trans to the river corridor folks, the Better Road, the Better Roads Grants and Aid folks have been involved, and we had a meeting, and a guy named John Nummy who works for V-Trans said, the project looks like it's going to be over a million dollars. And I'm like, come on, guys, this is no way. And so, he came, he got back to me a few days later and said, hey, I reviewed this, and it's lower, but it's still like $800,000. I'm like, this is no way. You know, with the two grants that we have, we could have purchased the damn culvert, hired someone to do the work, and been done with it, but now they're making it just wicked complicated, and said you have to now apply for the federal grant under TAP, and it's just, it's putting this thing, even with their timetables, down the road three years. And like, the thing's been standing since 2019. I like to just ignore it, but it's not the right thing to do. Technically, with FEMA out of the picture now, deobligating the money, we could ignore it, and keep working through this process till we come up with a solution, because V-Trans wants to work with us. Whenever you get the federal dollars involved, you have to pay all the exorbitant extra costs that come with it and the timelines, because you have to, you have to hire a municipal project manager, and then you've got to, then you've got to put it out for, put it out for bid, hire the municipal project manager, then you have to go up for design, and then you go to construction, and it just takes forever. Because I had a phone call today with Dave and Brent, with these same folks on another project, and they're telling us, on the, this was the Stormwater or Staso Road, I'm sorry, I'm digressing, maybe I should just stop right there, but again, it's going to put this project three years away if you start getting this federal dollars involved. So, anyway, that, to try to answer your question, we're down to basically $156,000 in grant money that we could use, plus our 20 percent.
And the, the ultimate project wouldn't really improve passage under the trestle?
It would not. The only thing that, there's a problem is, is that somewhere there's water that's coming up, pushing up through the ground, and that's why it's all, the asphalt's all falling apart underneath that bridge. And so, what we did find is there's slowly a bottom in there. They want us to go probe it and verify, because they're saying they, they did, but now they want us to do it again. But the bottom of the culvert, it looks like, fell away from the rest of the structure, and water's pushing up underneath that, and they're thinking maybe that's where it's pushing up into the road. So, we don't want to repave the road on top of this water problem, because then we're going to waste money there. So, it's been this chicken-and-the-egg thing for us trying to get through this, and it's just getting more complicated by the minute.
It's an existing concrete box culvert, correct?
And I asked if we could slip-line it, and, because there's a company we found in Massachusetts that does that kind of stuff. So, I asked Dave to reach out to him, which he did, I don't have the answer yet, but if we could slip-line it, and the answer is, well, yeah, they could be slip-lined probably, but it won't meet the criteria anymore, the new standards for, for volume. So, we could, maybe got away with a relatively cheap, have a slip-line, but they're saying, no, you can't do that anymore, now that we know about it.
Anything else on this for Mike? Any other questions for Mike on other topics in the report?
No, actually.
Mary Lee?
No.
Yosa, Dick?
I think at this point, do we need to do anything on the Little Rutland Road mess at this point, or are you good?
I think I'm good. I got, I do have the letter from Lois to send to them, so I don't know, they may not like it, but I have, at least I can move forward a little.
Okay. Joe, anything else for you?
I'm all set, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Mike. Purchase orders for approval?
I'm sorry, Mr. Jones, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Can I have an alibi?
One.
The assistance to firefighters grant, I put in here, we, we were, we weren't awarded the grant, it didn't make it to peer review because of an administrative error. The company wrote back to me and said, hey, we'll submit it again in the fall for it for nothing. But that doesn't solve the problem of the outdated SCBA's, the Self-Decaying Breathing Apparatus. So, I wanted to bring to the board's attention, and I guess I'm really not making so much of a recommendation, but just making you aware that I did talk to the fire chief, and his concern, if, by waiting another year, is we might not get the grant again after that, that period, and now they're way overdue on replacing these things. So, I put in there, on the original ARPA funds thing, I had put $155,000 as per consideration, and that price is now over $200,000. The 260, 269, 98839 is for SCBA and their air tank refill station, so it's not both. I actually have a copy of the grant here if you wanted to know what it was, but... SCBA, here it is. It's, when this was done, it was $191,975 for 20 of them, and that price has gone now over $200,000. I don't have it in front of me. Dan, Dan was going to get an update for me, but, so now, that's where they're, that's where the fire department's at, if they don't get this, this grant. No, they did get it, but I mean, we could, if you had to wait to apply, again, Heath is not recommending it just because of the status of what they had. They had three of them fail already. So, just want to bring to your attention, I think that Heath needs to be involved in this conversation at some point, and you hear from him rather than through me, his concerns.
When we have that conversation, Mike, can you be prepared with a couple of specific things? How many packs do we have in inventory now?
Let me make notes.
Yeah, you're going to want to write this down. How many packs we have in inventory now? How many air pack seats and/or spots, like Engine 6 has two, two packs onboard and two seats, even though the packs aren't built into the seat? But you know where I'm going with this? And then Engine 3 has so many, the ladder has so many, and the new ladder truck will have a quantity of seats as well.
Yep.
So, where, and how many of those packs that are currently in use have actually passed their expiration date at this point? Because I'm pretty sure that at least the ones in Engine 3 have not passed their date yet, but there will be a date, and we probably should know what that is, because it may not be that far away. We've had that truck for 12 years. You see where I'm, does it all make sense to you? So, if I forgot a specific question, you know, feel free to fill in the blanks, but when we have that conversation with the chief, I think we all need to know those details. That's all I got, Joe. I'm good.
Anything else on this? Mike, you have anything else?
No, thank you.
That's it? Okay. Move on to purchase orders. I don't see any purchase orders.
I didn't see any either.
So, we'll move on to warrants for approval.
Make a motion, we approve the following warrants. Warrant number 0508R for $650. Warrant 0425 for $240.75. Warrant 0427 for $5,349.34. Warrant 0428 for $2,803.49. Warrant 0504 for $17,967.50. Warrant 0508 for $307,771.20. Warrant 0427P for $15,208.77. And warrant 0504P for $15,605.74.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Is there discussion, questions? If not, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Motion passes. Do we have a couple of others here? Yes, we do.
I would make a motion that we approve warrant number 0427P for $612.53, and 0504P for $612.53.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second. Any discussion?
I recuse myself.
You recuse yourself, okay? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Oops. Delay my last.
One more, Mary Lee.
Well, that's a phrase from a previous life, delay my last. I'm not hurrying, I'm just stretching, Mary Lee.
It's okay.
I'm just going to take those over and sit next to Joe, and we'll team up on them.
That's good.
Seems like more than usual.
Ten.
Ten, that's a pretty normal number. We're from nine to 12.
My hand says it's too many.
Here's, this is where the error was.
That is very painful.
Mm-hmm. I said, no humans look at it? Yeah, but it goes to the computer screen first, and then they kick it out if it doesn't meet their criteria.
Even though it's a human error, the human being's running the computer, can't...
One SE is $191,000. That makes sense. Keep moving. There comes a point sometimes where common sense is not common.
Right. Well...
We lost that a long time ago.
Right on many occasions. I have a letter of resignation from one James Thomas. Family wants a copy of it.
Do you need any executive session, Mike?
That would, I'd leave that to you, if you want, I mean, give you an update on the police department stuff. Otherwise, I could provide you a written statement.
We have ten?
Thank you.
Thank you.
And...
We have ten.
Should we talk about the Castleton Village School briefly?
So, one for personnel, one for real estate?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion, we go into executive session.
Wait a minute, hold it.
Wait a minute, you skipped something.
Select board comments and/or concerns?
Oops, sorry.
I have a concern...
Sure.
For my health, I guess. I told you that Sand Hill Road became the dump, the new dump. So, stupidly today, I went down in the ditch to pull up a floor mat. I wasn't about to crawl, had a hard time getting out. Wasn't going to crawl down and get that tire out of there no matter what. I really wouldn't have got out of that ditch.
I can get somebody to pick it up.
Somebody's come along and picked up that darn thing that I went out and gotten put on the side of the road, the floor mat. I thought that was very nice of me to go down and get it for them.
I'm surprised nobody picked it up during Green Up Day. I was just hoping you'd call me back and say, somebody took it during Green Up Day.
Well, I, I did a part of Sand Hill Road, and I ran out of bags before I ran, ran out of road.
Neither one of those was a fit in a bag, either.
No, no, but it, it didn't look like it was touched.
Okay. I guess I'm...
And the tire's right in front of that area where the senior, senior housing's to go. It, it was rolled in so nice, it's just perfect.
Okay, anything else, Mary Lee?
No.
Is that it? Dick? Joe?
I'm fine.
Okay, if not, we'll move on. Do we have any brief recap items for follow-up? I guess not. If not, we'll move on to executive session.
Make a motion, we go into executive session for personnel at 8:28, with the board and the town manager.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 We're in executive session.